Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Garden City Planning Commission. It's Thursday, December 8th, 2022 at 6:30 PM. Our first order of business would be the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. If everyone would rise, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would our secretary take the roll call, please?
Chairperson May.
Here.
Commissioner Steenberg.
Here.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Here.
Commissioner Walls. Commissioner Kalidus.
Here.
Commissioner Mativier.
Here.
Commissioner King.
Here.
Next order of business is approval of the agenda. If we can have a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any comments or corrections? Hearing none, take the roll, please.
Commissioner Kalidus.
Aye.
Commissioner King.
Aye.
Commissioner Mativier.
Aye.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Aye.
Commissioner Steenberg.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye. Our next item is approval of minutes, regular meeting of July 14th, 2022.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of July 14th, 2022.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any corrections or comments? Hearing none, take the roll, please.
Commissioner King.
Aye.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Aye.
Commissioner Mativier.
Aye.
Commissioner Kalidus.
Aye.
Commissioner Steenberg.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye. Public comment of non-agenda items only. Does anyone wish to make a comment on any item that's not on our agenda this evening?
I just wanted personally come out and thank you guys as a commission to, for your volunteering of your service, your time. It's greatly appreciated by myself, the residents, council. So, I just wanted to come out again and just say thank you. I know it takes time out of your schedule, your home life, all that good stuff, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Business items, we have none. Other business and discussion items. First item's potential zoning, rezoning discussion. Discussion of recent requests for rezonings, potential development, and other current master plan, future land use designations. Mr. Ortega, could you start us off here?
Yes. So, to recap from our last meeting, we had a discussion about the properties that are currently zoned O1 in the city that need, are in need of rezoning because of our amendments. So, both gayist designations, and we are beginning the process of contacting those property owners because we want to make sure they're aware of the situation before we enact it. We had to do some research on the, through the state statutes, and it's determined that there have to be individual notifications for each site. There are some alternatives that would allow us to do a mass rezoning, but that's only for when ten or more sites are adjacent to each other. So, that makes sense if it's one large, large site that the whole thing is. But in this case, because they're scattered around the city, it's going to be necessary for us to do the, at least the notification part individually. But, so leading that similar situation, because we have the old one that we realized in the master plan that said we needed to get rid of because of its overlapping with other commercial districts. Similarly, I've been getting some other discussions from people that either are current property owners or new property, or potential buyers of property, that are interested in development, and they're not, what they're proposing isn't necessarily fitting with either the current zoning district, or sometimes not even, well, most times not even the master plan designation. And normally, my approach to that is if they're a property owner, technically they do have the right to ask to rezone the property, but I advise them that, you know, number one, the planning permission makes recommendations based on the master plan designation, so that's our guide, and if the guy that proposed the district isn't presenting what they want, you know, it's kind of difficult to go against that recommendation. But, looking at certain sites in the current commercial market, in the real world, if you will, sometimes it's, you can see why certain requests are being had. So, I just wanted to present to some examples of some situations. These aren't specific requests at all, you can't discuss them without, you know, specifically, but they're the general idea of certain things. For example, this first one is, would be a good example, is the southwest corner of Inster and Warren, because this is an example of what I would say is a high-intensity corner. You know, Inster and Warren, that's a major road intersection. Only the southwest corner is located in Garden City. The northwest corner is located in Westland, and then the north, excuse me, south, yeah, and then the northeast and southeast corners, these sites are different heights. And uses there, you know, you've got gas stations and you've got restaurants. In our, in the city, and I believe now you have colored designations, we have, it's zoned currently as C1, and what we only have zone C1 are, is a lot that has the, that front on Warren. All those lots fronting on Warren are zone C1, which is our local commercial, which mainly allows for retail uses, service uses, and then when it comes to restaurants, even the only type of restaurant on that corner could be carryout, under the current zoning. But then you can say, okay, well, let's look at master plan and see what we could rezonate to. The master plan designation, and that's the color in the lower right, is also for just the properties that front Warren, is local commercial as well, it's that white paint. The corresponding districts in the master plan are toward C1 as well. So, it's still kind of limits what could potentially go there if it was for a higher, a higher intensity district, like C2 or C3, meaning a restaurant, a full sit-down restaurant, or a restaurant with a drive-through, or a gas station. Now, there are definitely physical reasons that could be issued with that site becoming one of those higher intensity uses because of the setbacks from the intersection. But, when you look at the other, number one, Wayne County would have, say, at least I believe on the Warren side, because that is a county road, I think, we. And then, so in terms of the number of curts, or the distance from the road, you know, excuse me, distance from the intersection, they're going to have a say in that. So, the issue would be, the question to you would be, when, when someone comes to us with this thing, this idea of trying to, what we call upzone to a higher intensity, rather than just pass for the C1, which we would allow under the master plan, go for a C2 or C3, a higher intensity, what would your direction, what would your opinion be if that was brought up for you when it comes to those kind of uses? Because, you know, there's some school of thought that it's important to just follow in lockstep with the master plan, but then there are some instances that would allow for to go to a higher intensity because we fall back on the goals and objectives of the master plan, saying commercial development is best in certain locations. It's tough, it's a, it's a rough to walk.
Are you talking about that whole strip?
Well, it all depends, I think, you know, what you guys would think. Like, in that particular location, actually, it might be vast, because, for example, you have the T-Mobile building, that was there for a while, it was active for a while, it was currently vacant. To the west of that is the old bakery, and it was there for a while, and went vacant. And I will say, the building department recently had to go in, do an inspection, they found out, and we thought, and it turned out that it was a marijuana grow-up in the building.
In Metro or the bakery?
In the bakery.
Really?
Yeah. It was a marijuana grow-up operation. To the owner's credit, at least when they found out, they did clear out everything, and it is now vacant, at least at the last inspection. So, that's not, so that's not very good. And then on the corner of that lot, right there on Arcola, is a dentist office. Some other, yeah, some other kind of quirks of this location is that there is that smaller one-story building that's fronting on Inster, it's kind of hard to see in the picture, but it was, I believe, the dentist or an optometrist, it's currently vacant. But if you look at the zoning map, the current zoning, the building is actually zoned single-family. So, the only use that now can go in that building because it's been vacant so long. And I presume this happens because, I'm sure the doctor was there for a very long time prior to zoning, maybe, and so they could continue. But now that the building has been vacant for more than six months, the only thing they can do with the building is to do a permitted use in the current district. The current district only allows single-family homes, or the only commercial type of business would be a daycare, a child daycare for twenty or more children in that one building. The site itself actually extends to the west, and it goes into Arcola, and there's that parking lot back there behind the buildings. But that parking lot itself is actually zoned parking, so behind it, it can only be utilized for parking space, it can't put any building there. And then if you just say, well, that's a, that's a level of rezoning. If you look at the zoning map, just the quirk of the zoning and how they captured the lots, it's still planned for single-family. And, and it seems like a quirk of the master plan itself, because then you'll see in the master plan designation, all the other lots that fronting on Inster are planned for commercial. So, even though they're currently single-family homes, on Inster from Warren to the one block south of Warren, it's planned for commercial, even those local commercial, that one building got somehow left out of the designation for commercial. So, in this case, it would be, there's two options. One would be going through the process of amending the master plan to change the zoning of the master plan map, which, you know, that would be the most defensible in terms of longstanding support and validity of the master plan. Other, it would be to allow for a rezoning in this particular, so if not this specific, it doesn't have to be this specific, there might be, there are some other quirks like this in the master plan. But, you know, in that kind of situation where it seems like there's an obvious map and error, or somebody would have that, but here's a building that was commercial, should be allowed to be developed as some type of commercial, and if, right now, if you follow the letter of the law, could not be.
Commissioner Steenberg, you have something?
Yeah. Currently, the zoning is C1 from Inster to Harrison on the Garden City side, is that correct?
That is correct. Uh, to Deering.
Oh, only to Deering?
Yeah, only to Deering. Sorry, that's just, I know that's just an excerpt, but, but it does end at Deering. There's a little, it starts at.
I thought I looked on my map at home and it went to, okay, Deering.
That's, that's the zoning map.
Okay. Is it, is it possible to change the corner and not the rest of the, that C1 district? That's question number one. And number two, it would seem that we'd want to increase the intensity on that corner, specifically because the intensity on the opposite corner, which we would be competing against, has two restaurants, a daycare, a preschool, and a number of other businesses over there. So, its intensity is much greater than that single corner. And it would seem to me, in order for these, at least the first several buildings, and the, the one that's rezoned as residential, or have been converted back to that, it seems like that area would have to be something greater intensity than C1 to even be moderately competitive against what's to the due east of them.
I, from looking at it from a marketing and planning standpoint, I could, yeah, I would definitely think it could be warrant us being in higher intensity. But to actually go back to your first question, I think some things that sometimes people don't understand is that the master plan designations, and that technically even the zoning designations, although it's a little easier, a little more appropriate for zoning, those designations don't have to follow lot lines. You guys don't typically see that because it usually, and you actually have it in some of larger lots in the city, where the zoning designation ends a certain distance, and it might not follow the flatted lots, or that sort of situation. So, if you didn't want to have it go too far south, you could stop it. Or, for example, with that one lot, you know, technically, the doctor's office and the parking lot are the, and that's the reason why the, the doctor's office and the parking lot, it has two zoning designations. The rear part is just zoned for parking, because the ideas, in fact, you know, the idea with the parking district is to minimize the chance that a commercial building is going to threaten against someone's home, a single-family home. In this particular case, I don't think there's a, there's a whole other actual lot to south of the parking lot.
On Arcola?
On Arcola, I think that is currently there. But then, you know, you have setback requirements to, it could be done, and maybe we'd actually kind of create some. Were there different tools you could use to allow for the higher intensity uses while still protecting the single-family home?
It would seem to make that more usable, that you would want to combine that office lot with the corner. Because it's not, it's not much use setting there by itself.
Yeah, and the good thing about that would be then you have more space for vehicle circulation. You wouldn't be outside.
Yeah, then that, that lot would serve that whole corner then.
Yeah.
And, and the fact that from that lot down to Garden City Hospital at Maplewood, it's all R1, and so I wouldn't like to see it extended beyond that individual house, but by including that, it would allow somebody to come in there and possibly replace that building.
Right.
With a higher intensity use, and that corner is a pretty active corner as it exists now, but most activities in Dearborn Heights.
Right.
I, I wouldn't mind seeing it becoming C2, but I hesitate to go to a C3 because I wouldn't like to see automotive use in that, on that corner. It's, it's kind of small to begin with, and I think, you know, since it's so close to the residential there, that the automotive uses would be a problem. But, a little more higher intensity with C2 would open it up to maybe restaurant use or some other types.
Yeah, that's a good thing to point out, just to remind everyone that, that sometimes these corners, even though the, I think there were one or two gas stations on the other side, I think, two, right?
Oh, one.
One.
The opposite corner is empty lot now.
Oh, it is, okay. For some reason, like, now CBSs and Walgreens like next to each other, gas stations like that never do each other.
Yeah, they used to.
And there have been, you know, in these situations, I, not just here, but other places, I've found a lot of reports about gas stations. And, and sometimes they're just in, in locations that aren't appropriate from a site circulation standpoint, from approximately a residency standpoint, and then just from, from a master plan zoning standpoint. So, in those cases, it makes perfect sense to just have, to keep in line with the master plan and the zoning, but, so Fred, I think you might be a point that with these directions, you know, trying to see, C2, yes, maybe, but C3 might be just a little too far.
Yeah, I'm not sure that lot would be big enough for that anyway.
Right.
Takes 5,000 square feet for.
Yeah, but you need 20,000 square feet for a gas station?
Yeah.
That's true, we have the minimum lot size of 20,000. But, so, if I may, you, so you're interested, you would be.
Just for the corner and the adjacent lot, the, where the small vacant building is, not going any further down Inster. Yeah.
Going down Warren.
Well.
Would you want to see?
We've already got businesses down Warren.
Right.
That are, except for the bakery, that seem to be.
Thriving, yeah.
So, I don't see that we need to change that, if, you know, we just go down the corner and possibly the, the lot next to it, in, in both directions.
That first boundary line is Arcola, correct? Yeah.
The first street is Arcola, yeah. But, but that's not, the bakery comes and then there's.
Then that one little lot right there, like, the bakery is that one narrow lot, then there's actually, within a part, the parking lot is narrow, that other narrow lot, and the corner of Arcola and Warren is a density plus part of the parking lot.
So, going to Arcola would, would fit?
Yeah, going to Arcola and calling it C2.
Yeah.
Would be seen appropriate.
Yeah, that could be a consideration, but I'm not sure we need to go all the way to Arcola. We could, we could go the first two lots and call it right there, you know, depending on what we need.
And the idea right now, well, and then you can tell me, is this something you think would warrant a city-initiated rezoning, or is it just that if the ownership came forward, you'd be willing to listen to that?
Well, we might attract more interest if we rezoned it, but I'm not, I'm not sure if it's necessary to do that. I suppose people might look at it and say, oh, it's only zone C1, I won't bother. So, maybe, maybe it would be better to rezone just that corner?
The corner and the two small ones, or just the corner?
The corner and the two small ones, yeah. Two adjacent on either side.
Yeah. And then the one to the south.
Yeah. Mike?
I'd kind of like to see us go to Arcola because I think by making that one corner contiguous, it might encourage somebody to go in there and take one of these buildings away and put a new building, if they see.
They're going to have to take two buildings away anyway. You want them to also take the dentist office?
No, but if somebody were to come in there, possibly a big box store, a CBS, a Walgreens, because there's nothing in that immediate area until you get down the middle.
Drugstores or clothing stores.
Yeah. But, some other big box, if they were to be able to come in there and see that they could buy this parking lot and this building and that building, it would give them a much larger footprint to work with.
True.
And we might end up being able to redevelop some of these older buildings into newer buildings if they saw the possibility existed there. I don't think it would impact the rest of the C1 because that's pretty contiguous. It's almost like one continuous strip mall that's all set back at the same distance. So, it looks like it's all one, and I don't want to disturb that.
I agree, I wouldn't want to go any farther than Arcola.
I don't want to disturb that, but I think it would be clean to go all the way to Arcola and then take the one house that's been reverted back to an R1, because that would leave a large footprint on that corner for somebody potentially bigger than a Metro or a small restaurant. I don't even think that building, that Metro building could support a restaurant. It's a relatively small building.
Well, I actually.
And they violated every, everything in the book when they put it there in the first place, with their no sidewalks, and they paved over everything with blacktop and no, no landscaping, everything when that originally came in that we, they didn't apply hardly any of it.
That's a very good point, because one other thing I've been trying to emphasize with redevelopment is landscaping requirements, because it is in our books, that there is a 10-foot set of landscape buffer between the edge of the sidewalk and the beginning of the parking lot. Now, a lot of people sometimes want to redo that, want to just pave it because they think they want to get additional parking. But, a lot of the, because of the size of our lots, when you do pave that, you really don't get any additional parking. Because that's not enough space.
You get a wider lane, yeah.
You get a wider lane, exactly.
But I wouldn't let, well, the ordinance doesn't let people put in the lane anyway, and this isn't the minimum width, it's just that there's more comfortable people in the pickups, which that in itself is another discussion. But, there are some people that have done it, I mean, if you saw, I believe, a salon eight mile forward, closer to Inster on the south side, they redeveloped that one building, and they did put in the required landscaping. The, the printing, forgive me, the name escapes me, the printing company on the west side of the building, right here, just north of, of Chitty Corner from the Mathis T-Mobile and, and High School, they just, today, were finishing up redoing their parking lot, and I had to emphasize to the property owner that we do require landscaping of some sort. They were concerned about the weeds, and I said, well, it should be landscaped properly, the trees and that sort of thing, because, number one, it's from a safety standpoint for pedestrians, and then number two, higher-quality communities have that. And it's, because, and it just lends itself, and it's actually better for vehicle circulation because it gets people more time to not, when they exit the site, so there's a lot of benefits to it. So, to get back to our discussion, having more land available for the redevelopment would allow, would allow for that kind of ease of acceptance of landscaping requirements when they have more land to work with than if you just had a couple of lots. And I would say that you also have the factor of the parking requirements, too, for like a restaurant, for example. Finally, the idea, just so you know, there was a young, young man who already has a restaurant, interested in putting a restaurant there, and then when I had to tell him that it's C1, he's considering doing a carryout, which is what's allowed in C1, but he said he was interested in eventually having C1. So, the carryout, most you can have, kind of like the fish and chips place, I don't know, the chicken place, the chicken fingers place right here, next to the crockery, they at most have a counter, you know, so people can lean on it while they're waiting to pick up their food, that's a typical carryout. You know, footprint in the building. But, I think that the young man or some other person could develop that site for a, for a nice restaurant.
Yeah, with, with more room, it would open it up to probably a lot of different options.
Yeah, because looking at that site with him, the T-Mobile, even the parking spaces, they had two parking spaces on the corner near the sign, but they were only 10 feet deep, so only one car can fit, and one in the other, so we had, so you have to reconfigure that lot anyway, because the last person that painted that was very, let's just say.
Creative. Yeah.
And their parking configuration. So, yeah, this is an example of something, so this is very helpful for me, to know that you're willing to understand that maybe these sites like this could possibly be acceptable, while also making sure that they combine with other ordinance, just like landscaping with parking, and that creative.
Well, like what Fred was saying, if we, if we were to change it from the city, then that might open it up and make it more attractive to somebody that was looking, because I agree with you, if they're looking at the map and going, oh, crap, C1, I can't do what I want there, C1, I can't do what I want there, but if what they want is in C2 and it's already there, then it makes it more attractive.
Absolutely, because it, what lowers the, I mean, it reduces the amount of approval time by at least a little, if that a little bit.
So, does that request have to come from council, or can, can it come from us for the rezoning?
It can come from you two councils.
Okay.
So, as a planning commission, you can say, because that's what we're going to do with the O1, is we're going to say that, you know, based on the master plan, these need to be rezoned appropriately, and then in this particular case, you could.
Okay, does anybody else have any comment about this particular site?
No, I think that, I think that makes it a lot more viable, you know, because a lot of people do searches online, and they're like, find me a C2.
Yeah.
They're going to skip right over that.
And they're only going to look at C2s.
Right.
So, then the other scenario, some of the way from commercial, we go, say, this is the next page, is various discussions that people have asked me about doing apartments, or some type of other residential. Is various discussions that people have asked me about doing apartments or some type of other residential. A lot of times when people ask me about apartments, I let them know our standards, but then I also let them know about, you know, like a townhome situation or something which people that are longstanding residents in the community, but they no longer want them all along or have to deal with all that kind of thing, they could still live in the community, but just live in a condo situation or a townhome situation. The issues sometimes they're facing though is, is the, once you have the zonings of particular viable lots. I don't know if you noticed, but I think it was the old, I can't remember the first name, the camera building that had the southwest corner of Shotgun Ford.
Yes.
They've been for longest time.
Foxhole?
Yes, and now it has been redeveloped.
Right.
It took them a while, but they did redevelop, so all the apartments in there have been fully redeveloped.
And they're all full, as a matter of fact.
And, and they have one business in the back on the Shotgun side because they don't have that final tenant on the corner. But then, I do, they or some other people might be interested in redeveloping the adjacent property. Now, some of the issues there is the fact that, um...
The Knights of Columbus site?
Well, yeah, so number one, the Knights of Columbus site, I always, people do also ask me about what's available in City. That's one of the first things I point out just 'cause it's easy, so I don't care.
Ample parking.
Exactly. Because they, and that's an example right here, because if you look in the zoning map, there is that gray parcel, that is the parking lot, Zone VP, which is the parking. But adjacent to that is single family. If you look at the master plan designation, it's, the blue is a mixed use. Now, we have discussed mixed use, we have adjusted the ordinance to allow for potential for mixed uses as a second, as having residential above the first floor, but mainly for parcels that front on Ford. The master plan, 'cause, you know, this is our first order into it. So we thought on Ford from Henry Rock to Dillon. But if you notice in the master plan designation.
Yeah, I, I have a problem with that. I mean, how realistic is it to think that we're gonna tear out all those houses to put in mixed use?
Right, well, that's a thing. I mean, I, when it comes to this particular purpose, some individuals, or not even individuals themselves, I, I, I think a bit more of us, from the city standpoint, where we could drop the people if they were considering. Where could they go? And the idea behind the master plan of this designation was to have deeper development sites. 'Cause as we know, the, the lots along Ford aren't very deep. So typically people have to go wide, so they have to assemble property going east-west rather than the north-south.
Yeah.
And this, and some people are interested in, because if you look at the, at the, it doesn't come out very well in aerial photo, but to the south of the camera building that's been redeveloped, all there is is one single home that has not been used and it's.
It's currently empty.
It's currently empty and it's, would take a lot of reinvestment to make that a viable home.
Built somewhere in the twenties.
Yeah, and then to the neck, and then to the west of that, it's a large vacant piece of property on the same lot. Then, uh, so then, the next to that, between the parking lot and that corner home, there is another home, it's an occupied home on a larger lot. But, you know, we can't be held with the vagaries of the real estate market. From my understanding, the, the person that owns the Knights of Columbus is either, uh, isn't, and is just interested yet in, in developing. You know, that's, that's fine, that's their property, they can do what they will.
Is it still the pawn shop that owns that property?
Oh, I'm not sure, I don't know, did they, did they own it?
American Jewelry and Loan is the one that originally.
They bought it originally, yeah.
Which is the oldest pawn in Michigan.
Oh, okay. Well, that's why, they're not in that. But, uh, once again, if they want to, that's fine, but in terms of, from a city standpoint, viable sites and seeing, you know, new development and create cap space for the city and more importantly, home housing opportunities, you know, that's a viable site. And then the, you know, say someone would want to continue the development of the apartments in the camera building, parcels further south, the issue to face is that if you look at the zoning too, between Henry Rock and Maryman, all the parcels that front on either, uh, north side of Pardo or the south side of, or the north side of Crowder, are multifamily, except for this one block between Shotgun and Dillon. Even though the master plan designation does call up for like the mixed use, either mixed use or multifamily, that one block for some reason between Shotgun and Dillon is zoned, single family, but it's master planned for mixed use. And right now, so.
Well, that's a more recent designation though.
Correct. Oh, the, uh.
The master plan.
Kirkgate, it is a mix.
That's, that's why it's different.
We currently have quite a few scenarios that fit that same, uh, general aperture because most of the apartments, uh, up and down Ford Road are one street behind, which this would kind of fall right into that category. If somebody were to take that house and that V2 parking lot, they could put up a pretty significant number of units there, probably 12, 16-unit apartment possibly in that area.
And one other thing to keep in mind too is that as the planning commission, if you wanted to, you could also create some type of requirement or standard where say it's only townhomes per se, not necessarily apartments. I will let you know that, uh, there, uh, we do have on the northwest corner of Maryman and Ford, the old bar, 153.
153?
153. That's gone through various attempts at redevelopment. The latest attempt, um, associated with that property originally was the parking lot to the south of it, to the north of it, facing Crowder. Those are those three parcels that are zoned currently multifamily. And, um, so they're already zoned multifamily, they're vacant lots. And then there has been some discussion about possibly making those apartments and...
Which is already apartments on either side of it currently.
Yeah, and, but the apartments are, you know, apartments are proposing are similar to the apartments that are there, which are apartments in which the door opens directly to the outside and there are, the second floor aisles are exterior decked. So similar to the buildings that are there. And, and they, they wanna go higher and they wanna go with that same kind of configuration. So those are the type of things that we've, that have been approached, you know, as the property owner. If they wanna try, we'll try, of course. It's already zoned multifamily. But I think, I'm just wondering about other opportunities for say like a townhouse of that type of knowledge. 'Cause it seems to me like when it comes to that transition you wanna have, when you wanna have commercial uses, then go to apartments and then go to single-family homes, maybe something could fit in between those, between apartments such as what's being proposed, single-family homes, the townhouse kind of fits in there in that.
What is the definition of a townhouse?
Townhouse would be something in which they do have exterior, uh, they have shared walls. It's typically, most from six to eight units. Typically, a community regulates the width of the building so it doesn't get too long. But basically, it's like, um, but then it goes vertical, so it's a second floor, first floor. A lot of them sometimes have garages attached underneath on the first floor.
So it's condominiums that you're not buying, you're renting?
Right, uh, it could, well, either.
Sort of.
They, they do have condos that you can purchase.
Oh, okay.
It's just that in the current market, a lot of them are for rent.
Yeah, the only difference with that and a regular condo would be they're typically multi-story, right?
Correct.
As opposed to condos are generally on a single floor.
Okay.
But, um, so examples, you know, some of them can be very high-end. Uh, I always, my examples that I always go to that seem like they're pretty high intensity in terms of the density of them. In Dearborn, on Michigan Avenue, in the, in the westbound section. Kind of where Ford has redeveloped some of those buildings. There's some, uh, things between Miller and, I can't remember how far east, not as far as the Cardiotech, close to the Cardiotech on the south side, between the, the railroad tracks. There are some townhomes there that are brick.
In Oakwood?
Uh, it could be, yeah.
Between Telegraph and Oakwood there on the south side?
No, uh, much further, uh, east. So near, uh, east of Telegraph.
So closer to Oakwood because.
Yeah.
There's a lot of condos in there by Mongolian and.
You know, right there, you have the opening, you know, on Michigan Avenue, go past Telegraph, go past Village Ford, go past the Kroger, then it kind of narrows.
Yeah.
And then you got the church on one side and you have this, and then you got the strip malls and then you have even narrower, those buildings right there, behind them on the east, on the south side are townhomes.
A lot of them.
They go all the way to the tracks.
They go all the way to the tracks. And I'm not to say that that's the type of, that type of density would be appropriate, but I think in terms of the quality you can find in these type of townhomes. There's also some in Eastbourne, near the old Dearborn City Hall, behind the old Montgomery Wards. It's now a, you know, a, not a building.
Well, they, they took.
Shaker, Rashanah and Shaker.
It's interesting, they tore down wards on that southeast corner and what they built is nearly identical and it is the identical footprint 'cause I've talked to people in, in there. And the city hall is now an artist community, artist and resident community, and it's a beautiful redevelopment.
And then on the Shaker side, on the east side of Shaker, behind, like south of Montgomery Wards, are townhomes there.
And it's something we may be needing to address in the not-too-distant future because, uh, I don't see another jewelry store going where Oren's is at if, if they didn't see it as a viable corner any longer. I don't think any other jewelry store is gonna see it as such as well, so.
The last example, there's some on Anover Road and Plymouth, between Sheldon and Main Street. There's only a couple blocks of it, but on the south side of Anover Road, between Sheldon and Main, ours and townhomes of a similar, I think, configuration. So not to say that those, um, that high, that high of building would be appropriate. But once again, as the planning commission, you could dictate how high the building would be, how dense it could be.
Those are four-story if I'm not mistaken.
I think that's the issue.
Yeah, we have a issue with fire protection when we get to that height.
And we could work with the fire department, fire marshal, doc, if that's not what's appropriate for.
Yeah, 'cause.
So anyway, that's a roundabout back to discussion of, you know, maybe not here is appropriate, but the issue the city is always facing is the depth of our lots. And whether we should go, how far do we go into residential areas and with what type of use? And this seems like, uh, just an example to show like how we have multifamily, uh, Crowder up and down between Maryman and Henry Rock, you have the Mohawk and Pardo to Maryman and Henry Rock, then the, the one missing piece in the middle.
Well, if there's, if there's an area, like you say, that we have an abandoned house and another vacant lot next to it, then that would seem to be logically suited for rezoning if it's, if it's not already zoned multifamily.
And another, a tool in, in the tool box could be conditional rezoning. We have a ton of those, but a conditional rezoning for multifamily that will allow for only townhomes and not apartments could be an option. So that way you, you know, depending on the configuration of buildings. So to me.
Well, that would make our housing a little more diverse. You know, if we could get in some townhomes, right now we have some condos, mostly, uh, the individual unit condos.
Oh, right, right down the street, yeah.
Yeah.
So I, from, if I may, sort of, but based on the discussion, seems like this might be something more where the, if someone was interested, the property owner or the applicant would have to be the one to bring forth the idea rather than.
I think that might work better in this case, yeah.
Rather than city-initiated because.
Yeah.
There's too many options.
That, that would be kind of like forcing something in to a spot rather than we just stand back and, you know, if somebody makes a proposal, then certainly consider that.
So this is very helpful for me because as I said, I, I wanna make sure that any information I can make to potential property owners or applicants is information based on your guidance. I don't wanna do anything that occurred to anything that isn't, that isn't desired of the city. So this would be, this is the miracle. I guess one last thing before I open up any other topics you guys would like to talk about is that these other, there's a few other lots that are zoned VP that we don't, now could not be done as any type of building. But say the, uh, the VFW Hall, the current vacant site, they have a portion of their site that is the rear parking lot.
Yeah.
That's, that's currently, that would not be allowed for building. I don't know what your opinion is on development for that. 'Cause I agree, but for that one, I, I think it's appropriate to like let them have full-length development of the Ford Road lot and then that be the parking. So I don't know if that's something.
Yeah, wasn't that kind of what was gonna happen when we were putting in the restaurant and fast food place?
Yeah, I think what it was is the only thing that was there was gonna be the Ford registration for the.
Yeah, it was gonna be the drive-through.
Yeah, portion, yeah.
Yeah. Well, it seems like it's only suited for parking really.
Yeah.
So I don't know what else, uh, would be appropriate there.
I'm just beginning to think in my head of other sites that initially could be opportunities for townhomes. We'll see, I think, letting the, letting the market.
I think, yeah. I think the townhomes would fit in better if we could find a place with a nicer section of, uh, either apartment buildings or single-family homes. Some of our, some of the apartments that run along behind Ford Road on both sides are small and, uh, you know, putting in a nicer townhome development might look out of place there. So if we could find an appropriate area, that, that would be nice.
It's basically, and of, uh, two things that have been very helpful, so I can't refer that anyways. I'm also hoping any point for your discussion about.
Okay, Mike?
Good question. Generally speaking, from your experience, when a developer or a potential customer to Garden City comes to you, do they already have a, a real steadfast idea about, I need a C2 property? Do you have anything in the city? Or do they come to you and say, I'm thinking about a toy store. Where could I put this? What would be allowed here? And I like this corner here, would it be allowed there? And you say no and they, are they willing to negotiate and see about changing that? Or does that kind of end the discussion, well, it's not allowed there, okay, boom. What else you got?
I would say it runs the gamut of all, because, because what it is is there are definitely some people that come in and they have a piece of property and they wanna do it this way. And then when I tell them they can't do it that way, um, you know, like, like we, we've example the gas station. Sometimes people wanna put them in inappropriate locations just because it's not deep enough, it's just not big enough. So I just ask them, I don't know, it's physically not big enough for you to do that. And that's what happens. Others are property owners that are, that are interested and like, you know, I've got this piece of property, I've been trying to lease it, I don't know what to do with it, I can't think of anything. So I'm trying to help them by giving them a list of uses that we currently allow. I go to the master plan, let them know what it could potentially be rezoned at. So that's why this kind of discussion is gonna help in terms of like, all right, what would you be willing to listen to in terms of that? And then there are others that, um, that are trying to find a spot for a particular use. Other things that have come, uh, that were recently, and they come and go as trends too, as you know, the market. One of the last, latest things, some, a handful of people were trying to develop, find a site in which they could hold events, but it would. but it would not be, it would basically be a, it basically would be a rental hall. And that's what I told them it would. Uh, but they wouldn't, they wouldn't put in any type of kitchen or like, you know, a kitchen that someone could do that. It'd be a place where people would just say they have their children's events and they could, um, come rent the, rent the building, basically. And then, uh, people would cater, they would cater in the events and cater the food and have their child's birthday party or have their, uh, you know, shower or something like that. And then typically it's like rental halls is what they're trying to tell them, but then they, it's only in C3. They want to go, they want them to be smaller units, like a thousand square foot building at most. And it's just that we don't have any, any buildings in the C3 that are owned off of it. And that's one of those where they were trying to do that and then now I haven't heard any of that at all. That was an interesting one, I wasn't sure because it's kind of, it's kind of funny, basically they're saying, let me, they're telling a tenant, property owner, let me market your building for, for other events and I'm just going to lease them just basically. I don't know really what else they do other than, you know, and so it was interesting.
That, that Warren and Inster corner between the, the parking lot next to the dentist and the, uh, the cake shop in Metro and that house, I'll bet they could get 20,000 square feet out of that corner, uh, pretty easily. Which would really redevelop that corner tremendously if somebody showed an interest in it.
Anybody else have any zoning?
If I could just one?
Yes.
Go ahead. Oh, I just one question, um, just maybe kind of test the market demand. Are, are we getting any interest in the Berger property?
In the which property?
Yeah, Dawson and Dylan, I believe.
Uh, no.
I mean, you'd think that would be a pretty significant
Actually, that's a good point, that would be a very good point, very sort of like a, a
Townhouses, yeah, they'd be excellent.
That's owned by the library still, right?
No, they just have that one corner.
Of Kroger, right?
They got the baseball diner closest to Ford Road.
But there's a big section on the other side of Beechwood.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
The school sold that to a development company that was supposed to put houses on there. They had, uh, five years to develop, get the houses going in that, that area. Last I checked, because I, I asked the school on that, uh, they were at, I'm going to say the fourth year right now. They're, they're going into the fifth year of this developer, either has to develop it or the school have, they're, they're going to have to renegotiate or the school, it goes back to the school, I believe.
So they have an option now, but that's going to end soon?
It, it's, I'm going to say within a year.
Yeah.
From the time they sold it, it was a five-year plan, that the developer had to put in X amount of houses or it was going to be residential. I don't know if they had a set amount of houses, but
That would be ideal for the townhouses that you were talking about, yeah.
But I, I've questioned the school because of, you know, you're supposed to, they're supposed to be doing something with it. So it just stayed vacant and the, last I heard, it was within the fourth or fif- third to fifth year of, they had to do something. And I, I believe it's fourth or fifth year right now, so.
Okay, well, maybe coming available then. Or maybe rather than putting in single-family homes, they'd be interested in, uh, a townhome. Is, is it, is it zoned R1 right now?
It is zoned, I do. It should be, that, that even, yeah, it is zoned R1.
Yeah, so that, that would be one that, uh, we would certainly consider rezoning for townhomes if, if they were interested in building it. I wouldn't want to do it in advance, but
Yeah. Yeah, and is it across the street from the other kind of development sites?
Yeah.
South Side Department Gallery, where they are around for stuff.
And it might be close to the library someday. Is there any other zoning questions?
I have a question.
Yes?
What's the street that runs behind the old Kmart? Is that Beechwood?
Beechwood.
Beechwood, yeah.
What if, now could a developer, like, for like the townhomes, what if they want to develop townhomes on the, the Kmart property but facing Beechwood? Is that possible?
Absolutely.
Well, that's in the CB, that's in the CBD.
Yeah, but the CBD does allow townhomes. And then I do believe, I'm going through some of the owner files because we've done, Canada did a long time ago, different concepts, but yeah, definitely that would be something. Because then it could buffer the homes on Beechwood on the north side, the townhomes, and you could have, because we always, whenever we try and do a concept for that site, it always is about creating roads into it. Because it's so deep and then that's a little bit of an opposite problem, it's very deep. And then the people don't want to be that far away, uh, unless it was, as a big box. But yeah, that's something that I think along Beechwood.
That's, that's actually been on the table before.
Yeah.
Back when we knew the 50-year lease on Kmart was coming to an end, we floated that, that very same idea. And, you know, there's, uh, one, two, three, four, five, five different ingress and egress points to that property. And of course, Wayne County would like to see far less than that, which when we were doing the LA Fitness, we reduced the two on Ford Road down to one at least, uh, which was significant in itself, but unfortunately COVID got in the way and killed that deal.
Yeah, it really was, yeah, that's a very good point.
Uh, the former mayor talked about, um, he thought a hotel would be a good idea and he floated a number which I think the number was nationally, major hotel chains only have to have 12 or 14% occupancy to be viable for the whole year. And that would bring in out-of-town people into Garden City and it would be walkable because there's a number of things down there. But, but townhomes would be people that live here and have children and go to school and pay taxes here and all that. And that site would sure be an awesome site. Especially that, to continue to have the one entranceway on Ford, uh, you know, a split boulevard that's landscaped like
Well, depending on how much of that site they use, that, there would, could still be commercial on Ford Road with parking.
Absolutely, yeah.
On the backside.
And then the backside of Long Beach would, would be where the townhomes were.
Yeah, yeah, that would, could
And actually, there's some of the things that they were doing that recognized in Mission Avenue and Dearborn. Because that front, I think it was all developed in, in the same sort of multi-tenant buildings that fronted on Mission Avenue, behind it were, were the townhomes, so.
Originally Jacobson's and, and Himmelhox and all that, they had zero lot lines and all the parking was behind. Now where all that parking was is all townhomes and the zero lot line has been pushed back a little bit to allow for parking and it's all retail. And it's a, that's a beautiful area down there. Lot of activity, lot of activity.
But I would say that even the hotel option is right, we've seen a lot of them come up in a lot of areas, things you wouldn't expect because it only does take about 10 or 12, 10 to 15% occupancy for them to be viable. They need to be, they do need to be about three to four stories, they're looking for four stories, so that's the only issue.
Yeah, we'd have, we'd have to look at that because, well, we do have a, a 10-story building in town anyway, so, I mean, that can be worked around.
Yeah, and the other thing too is that, uh, for, because of all the different large events that downtown Detroit is getting, when they market it, they, they do say, all right, there are so many, you know, hotels about this distance. But then there's so many hotels between the 10 and 15 mile radius too. And so they count.
Yeah, and that's a straight shot for downtown.
It is.
You know.
We're 17 miles from the epicenter of downtown.
Yeah, and Ford going straight, you just have to eventually hit 94 and then you're good.
Yeah.
25-minute shot. Do it every week.
And then when the restaurant opens and the banquet facilities, you know, the, and where they are.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have options.
That could be a great marketing tool for the potential banquet hall, which is going to be pretty good size. That could be a, a heck of a marketing tool. And it might be something that they might want to push towards, you know, with a, a national chain.
Well, it would benefit both.
Yeah.
Because people would stay there to go to the banquet hall and people would use the banquet hall because there's nearby hotel.
Symbiotic relationship, real good one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on then, our next item is election of officers. Discussion, nominations, uh, starting out with, uh, chairperson.
I nominate Fred.
Second.
You're not getting off the hook.
Okay, I'll accept nomination, uh, any other nominations? All right, uh, should we roll on each one individually then?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do each one.
Okay. Well, all in favor, you want to do a roll call or?
For, for a procedural motion like that, we could just do, uh, you know, a
Just your voice?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor of Mike continuing as chairman?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Guess I'm elected again. Okay, next would be, uh, vice chair.
Nominate the current one who's in there now, Mr. Steenberg.
I accept.
You accept? Other nominations?
Should have, does anyone want a second?
I'll say.
Oh, we need a second, okay, we have a second. Other nominations? Hearing none, all in favor of, um, Mr. Steenberg continuing as vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And secretary? Nomination for secretary, yes?
I nominate Diane.
Second? You accept?
I accept.
Okay. Uh, any other nominations? Hearing none? Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, congratulations, Diane.
It's like election in Russia or China.
Yeah.
Everybody's in favor
Yeah.
of the one person that's on the ballot.
Okay. Next item is, um, meeting schedule for 2023. Uh, we have a proposed meeting schedule, any problems with that?
Do we need a motion to accept this or no?
Yeah.
Yeah, we need a motion to accept the schedule.
I'll make a motion to accept the 2023 meeting schedule.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any, uh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's schedule is accepted. Okay, Commissioner's comments regarding planning and zoning matters. Commissioner Kletus, comment?
No, Bunker.
Commissioner Steenberg?
To Mario, um, do we have anything in the offing, any current inquiries that look promising? Anything that may be coming to us in the not-too-distant future? And also, um, any, any, uh, any noises on the LA Fitness property or any of the other things that?
So when it comes to LA Fitness property, I actually have an idea. Technically, there's actually two pieces of property, the LA Fitness property and then the, where the old Tire Center was, that's its own separate piece. Someone was, was looking at that for a little while, but I think there might have been some easement issues with that, uh, how they were thinking. And it's potential they, um, walked away because then they, the discussion, I'll say, shifted to say a drive-through and obviously a drive-through downtown, we're not interested in that. Which was other developments before you, tonight was supposed to be a site plan for 1847 Inster. Something you already had seen back in 2019. And it was approved for a multi-tenant, uh, commercial building. They were just put through the regular Wayne County, running back and forth with the stormwater, she took some other things. And then they did not apply for an extension, so their site plan approval expired, so they just, they need to come back for approval again because their original approval was just too long ago.
Oh, aren't they expected to come back then?
Yeah, so they, they were just having some, there's some of their wires that cross, it's the middle of the documents, they needed to submit their fees appropriately, just to get
Yeah, that was a smaller four unit?
Yeah, four unit.
Yeah.
Turning you in Tuesday wasn't going anywhere. But, but to their credit, the site does, does look good in terms of consistency with what's approved and they kind of tweaked it to make it even back, function back. Beyond that, there isn't too much officially going on. Like I did just mention, I had some preliminary discussions about potential apartments on Crowder, east of Merriman, on the old Barbary Street parking lot. They were interested in a number of variances to make it taller and, uh, higher density. So we'll have to take a look at that and see what they ended up coming up forward with. And then I haven't heard, uh, anything about the re, potential, uh, sub-development of a site at Arcola in Cherry Hill. That site, they did get rezoned, we did clean up the zoning on the front of it. Then, uh, they were need of a lot of variances and so unfortunately I said that they could go to the Michigan variances first, but ZBA wanted to make sure that the site plan was reviewed first. So site plan has to be first, but there, there are a number of issues with that configuration they proposed. They, they've been in discussions back and forth with fire marshal about the issues there. And they say that DTE is willing to, uh, give, I believe what they're trying to say is that DTE is, um, only saying they only need a certain number of feet away from power lines for the building. I don't know how the fire marshal is going to feel about that, but we'll see. So that one, I think is a little, a little ways away from coming forward. And in that case, that's a apartment building, it'd be two and a half stories. So they would have garden apartments on the first floor, meaning it'd be a step down to garden level apartments and then two stories above that. But the configuration of the building is very close to, uh, the property, the original, the close property along the east property line with Wendy's. And it would be against the drive-through, uh, maybe the drive-through, it's already there out there, Mary Carol. So they're trying to reconfigure this. And beyond that, not, not
Nothing on Ford and Merriman? Still sitting on his gold bone, huh?
They, I actually did have one discussion with, uh, I think it might have been a potential property that has gone through and purchased it now and are positive.
Really?
But, uh, because they, they're just in the gas station. But the issue there is DTE again, because they want to go, it's in the master plan for the entire block on Merriman, on the Merriman side from Ford to that one, I guess that'd be Crowder, yeah.
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 To be, uh, right now, the Crowder and Merriman side parcel is multifamily, but it's planned for commercial, like in a high-intensity commercial, so they could approach it for a C3 rezoning and then do a, then do a gas station except right at the property line halfway mid-block is another DTE power line instance. right at the property line, halfway mid-block, is another DTE power line instance. So they, I told them, the first thing you'd have to do is to talk to DTE about what they're gonna do around those lines, because there are homes further west than Crowder, like presumed are being serviced by that line, so, you know, it's an issue that they have to deal with to make the site viable.
Yeah, that, that corner itself is only C one, isn't it?
Uh, I think you are correct, but it's, but the master plan does have it for the higher intensity commercial. So they, the first step would be to re-reezone the entire site to C three, the darker.
Yeah.
Do we currently have a DDA director?
I'm, I'm not sure.
Now that Kim has moved on?
No.
No?
No, we, we've uh been in discussion with a certain group, a group opposed, or instead of an individual, a group kind of applied for, uh, with a protocol, certain person, that would be the director, but working with uh four or five different people in a group.
So a marketing group, hopefully.
Or less, yes.
Yeah.
They, you know, certain people would do certain things. Um, we're working on, uh, trying to get together what we want them to do. They proposed to us kind of what they, what they would do. Uh, DDA and city is coming back with, here's what we want you to do, and can you do it, can you provide the services that we're looking for? And so it's kind of still a negotiation right now.
Are they national, regional, or local?
Uh, he's, they're, they're a local group. Uh, the one, the one guy that's proposing to be the, uh, the director out of the group, he's a Garrett City guy. Uh, but they've got a little different plans than what possibly the city was looking at, or the DDA was looking at. Uh, what I'm trying to do is, if, if they hire a strong economic development group director, whatever, the city can go a little lighter on that, maybe a part-timer, uh, intern type of little deal to work with them. If not, if they go with uh someone else, or however they wanna do it, then the city would probably go with a stronger economic development director, which would probably come up and invite it uh next year.
When, uh, when, um, the city of Detroit got their first Myers, which was on the old State Fair property, they got that because the council had changed to a national marketing group, and Myers was looking nationally, because they're in five states now, I believe, but, or they're looking to go to five different states. I know they're in Ohio, but I think they're.
The ci- the city's part of a national, we, we put out a bid, or, you know, we'd say we're looking for a, a DDA director, we're looking for an economic development. It's, we can go national. DDA did not uh choose to go that way, uh, they kind of like more local, more there, their little, uh, group, however you wanna call it. Uh, so we're, depending on what goes on with this group, if they, if we, if the DDA rejects this group, or they don't, you know, they don't wanna go in the same direction, then we'll probably put it out national through the city and go from there. Uh, you know, but Myers, Myers has some, Myers has some smaller locations now, they're coming out with, uh, I'll say mini-stores, mini-structures that would potentially fit into that Kmart group.
Well, the, the thing about local or national, or where we get the actual person or the company from is one thing, but it'd be great to see somebody that has a national reach in their marketing, and not just a regional, because there's cities around us that are bursting at the seams. You go to South Lion, they're building on every street corner in South Lion right now. Ferndale is saturated, and they're still looking for places to build, if you talk to their marketing people there. Ann Arbor, they're building every other street corner in Ann Arbor right now. So there's cities, there's, there's business out there, there's national businesses out there from chains such as Dunkin' Donuts and Starbucks, and you have it, that are looking to expand. Uh, BP Gas Station, the reason I ask about that, I have a minor amount of stock in the company, along with other stuff, but right now, they're currently looking for two hundred and eighty-seven sites to expand, and I know of a bunch of new BPs in my driving that I've seen. So, you, you know, even though some companies are holding back and whatnot, there's a lot of companies that are expanding right now, and we have cities all around us where you can see that evidenced.
I would, I would say our biggest problem, because everyone compares us to Deerwood Heights with everything, Deerwood Heights has a lot deeper lots, so you can do different businesses that we can't. Um, you know, I, you probably remember way back when Kmart wanted, buy that Beechwood property, all the houses there.
They wanted us to close off Beechwood between.
And make it into a super K and all that. Uh, you know, if, if you compare our, our lot sizes to the Deerwood Heights ones that are taking over over there, they're a lot deeper, and that's, that's an issue we have. Uh, you know, there's, there's, there's ways around it, what the companies were gonna get, uh, and we're, I, we're looking at that.
Good, okay.
On our radar.
Right.
Just one follow-up on the bar you referenced a couple of times on an apartment in the parking lot, what about the structure?
So, several times.
It burnt.
So the, the structure did have a fire, and the, the western portion of the building is now structurally unsound. Uh, and so, two times, they, initially, there was a proposal now, currently, there's another idea to tear down the western half of the building, uh, make that into a parking lot. Uh, they would be, it would be sixty feet wide, so it's just enough for two banks of parking and the, and the appropriate twenty-foot aisle. And then the western part of the building could potentially be a, right now, I think it might be a contractor's office, like a, uh, I think you use a door and window, you know, custom home contractor situation. So that would be the showroom area, uh, parking lot, that is the last I heard. So, yeah.
That's why they're willing to give up the back of that lot.
Correct, because, because the second I heard about removing the back of the lot, I was worried about potential redevelopment of the building, but that was their counter.
Yeah, we should make sure that's locked in before we let them get rid of the rest of their parking.
Very good point. Uh, because the last time, they, they were giving you a similar concept for redevelopment building, but they wanted a curb cut onto Ford Road, and I was like, good luck, talking to him, Don, about getting a curb cut in that close to Merriman. And I think that discussion must have fell through, especially when technically people can access it via the alley behind it. So it makes sense for a contractor's office, because it's a destination. It's not someone driving along the corner, oh, I wanna go here and try and gear off into there. It's someone, contractor will give them the ad, just come to my office, go down this alley, you'll get the parking lot, it'll be fine.
And there's already quite a use for that with the doctor's office and the tattoo parlor and a number of other things in there.
Did you have anything else?
I'll say, thank you.
Randy?
I'm all set.
Eric?
I'm good.
Brian?
Nothing.
Nothing. Did you have anything else, Mario? Okay. Well, I don't really have anything either. I think we covered quite a bit tonight. Uh, next regular meeting will be January twelfth, twenty twenty-three, and I'd like to wish everybody a happy holiday and uh, see you next year.
Happy holiday.
Happy holidays, everybody.